I'd like to call to order the regular council meeting Tuesday, August 27th, uh, 22nd, 2017. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Ceraci?
Here.
Mr. Roden?
Here.
Mr. Steele?
Here.
Ms. McPheron?
Here.
Mr. Scafidi?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Here.
Thank you. Now, Mrs. Stoffer will lead us in the invocation and pledge.
O God, from whom all powers come, by whose divine will all must abide, we thank you for our civil liberties and freedom, for our opportunities and our privileges. We beg of you to bless, assist, and enlighten this council and representatives of the city of Twinsburg. May we prove worthy of the confidence placed in us by our federal fellow citizens. May we be just and upright in our thinking, honest in all of our actions, and ever be guided by a true conscience in the legislation we propose or vote upon. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think we've heard that one before.
No, I think so. Next will be the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, July 11th. Are there any changes, corrections, additions? Anyone? The minutes then will be approved as written. Next, we have audience participation.
There is none.
None? Okay, thank you. Awards and presentation.
We have Holly Miller from the Summit County Community Development.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Holly Miller, and I am the Senior Administrator for the Summit County Department of Community and Economic Development, under our County Executive, Eileen Shapiro. What I wanted to do was come this evening and share some programs that our department has available for the citizens in your city. Some of them you have already taken advantage of, others you may know about but maybe just need a little bit of refresher. I believe Shannon handed out some information to you. There's extras that we'll leave here for your residents. The first thing is our program overview, which is all of the programs that we administer out of our department. All of these funds are designed for low-to-moderate income individuals. The one that you would be most familiar with would be our Community Development Block Grant Program, which the city of Twinsburg has received funds in the past. We did some minor home repair specifically for the citizens of your city a few years ago, and most recently, I believe it was the handicap ramp and doors, Larry, right? So this is something that you're familiar with, applying for and receiving. We receive about $933,000 a year from HUD. We can only spend them in our jurisdiction, and even though we're Summit County, our jurisdiction does not include Akron, Barberton, or Haga Falls, which we like to call the ABCs. They get their own funds, so they use their money that they receive from HUD to do their projects with. The largest thing we do with Community Development Block Grant Dollars is granting funds to cities and villages to do projects like your ADA facilities and minor home repair for low-to-moderate income individuals that you've done in the past. We also have a Home Investment Partnership Program, which we receive funds from the Department of HUD as well. We only get about $300,000 in this fund each year, and this is to provide safe, simple, decent, affordable homes for low-to-moderate income individuals. Typically, we invest this money into tax credit projects where there's just some gap financing, so that we're able to provide as many homes as possible. The program that we have probably the most amount of money in is our Lead-Based Paint Hazard Reduction Program. That's the small piece of paper here. We partner with the Summit County Health Department, and this is for homes built after or prior to 1978 that have children under the age of six living in the home or visiting 62 hours or more a year. That could be a grandparent that's a caregiver, maybe a child gets on or off the bus there, or they watch the child during the summer months when they're not in school or preschool, or it just could be that neighborhood house that has all the kids that come over there all the time. If they meet the income guidelines on the back, they fill out an application, we come up to the house, we test for lead. What this grant does, it replaces anything that has lead, so windows, doors, siding, interior paint, front porch floors, front porch ceilings, all of it gets replaced brand new. We take it out, we put new in, and it's a grant to the owner. This can be owner-occupied, or this can be a rental property. So if you know of any residents that may qualify for this, we have the applications I can get it to. You can get a link on your website. We have about $2.5 million yet to spend on this one, and this grant runs through June of 2018 before we apply for another one. Another program that we have is our Household Steward Treatment System Program. I'm not sure how many septic systems, if any septic systems, you have in the city. But if you do have some, and they are failing, this program is funded through the state of Ohio, through the EPA. We will abandon the existing septic system, either tie them into public utilities or replace the failing septic system, and it's a grant to the homeowner through this.
What if there isn't an existing sewer line there?
Is it across the street? Is it anywhere near there? Then it would be a septic system. Another program that we have is our Home Weatherization Assistance Program. This program is through the Department of Energy. It is designed to lower the energy burden for your low-to-moderate income individuals. So we go in, they get a new furnace, a new hot water tank, insulation, LED light bulbs, and new refrigerators or freezers if they are high-energy usage. All of this, again, is a grant to the homeowner. We're able to combine and provide wraparound services with all of these programs. So if they have kids under the age of six and they have lead in the home, we'll do lead abatement. Then I'll come in with HWAP, replace the furnace, the hot water tank, the insulation, the light bulbs, the freezer, and the refrigerator. And then if they need a new roof, I'll do minor home repair and provide a new roof for them. There's no maximum number of grants that I can combine into one unit, as long as the income qualifies. We do one application, and we fit the client into the funding sources that will benefit them the most. They don't have to worry about filling out five different applications. The last program that we have is our Revolving Loan Fund Program. We take this out of our Community Development Block Grant Funds. We set aside about $200,000 every year, and this is for employers that are either moving to your city, or they need to retain employees. It's a $50,000 loan. For every $25,000 that is loaned to them, they must create or retain two full-time equivalent jobs for low-to-moderate income individuals. It doesn't mean that after they hire them, they can't give them raises. It just means at the time, they need to be low-to-moderate income. That could be someone who's underemployed, it could be a college student straight out of college looking for a job. So far, we've given five of these loans, and we have created over 120 full-time equivalent positions, just in those five loans. The last program that we have that we don't have all year long is this Fuel Fund Assistance Program. We get money from First Energy to help individuals that are at the poverty level, that are delinquent on their electric bills, keep their electric turned on. This will avoid any shut-off. We do this through October. After October, winter crisis kicks in, and it's $175 if you go delinquent and you're low-income. We do this at the Ohio Means Jobs, which used to be the Job Center on Talmud Avenue. We do an intake day from 8:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. We see about 200 people a day when we have these intake days. We collaborate with Job and Family Services, and they have assistance there for individuals that are delinquent on their gas bills as well. And lastly, I gave you the Senior Citizen Handbook. You don't need to be a senior citizen to open it up and read it, but this is a really good resource of all of the programs that are available in Summit County. I would encourage you to, I think there's some left, Shannon, right? If you need more, to have them out for your residents. However, if you have a resident that is in need of a service, and you think, gosh, there's got to be something out there for them, there's got to be something the county provides, I encourage you to call me or email me, and we'll find that. Or just simply have your resident call 211. They know exactly who has the money, because money goes in and goes out throughout the year, and sometimes grants end, and we don't have money until they start again. 211 knows the grant cycles, or I can find that information out for you. Does anybody have any questions? A lot of information, really fast. No? If you have anything or need any additional information or anything links that you'd like from your website, just have Shannon let me know, and I will get it over to you.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks, Holly. Council Communications, Mr. Scafidi.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome back to everybody here. Good to be back. Hope all the residents are having a great summer, and there's still some left, so it's not over just because we're back. Summer's still here. My committees, under the Board of Zoning Appeals, the last meeting we had was July 26th, and they heard appeal number 092017. That appeal was an applicant proposing a single-family detached home on Maryvale Drive. They were looking for side yard setback variances, specifically a two-foot side yard variance on the north property line and a three-foot side yard variance on the south property line. After the vote, the board did approve that variance. They've asked me to, even though it's been a while since that meeting, they asked me to make a motion to waive the 30 days or the remainder of the 30 days of this meeting. So at this time, I do make that motion to waive the remainder of the 30 days on appeal number 092017.
Oh, second.
Mr. Ceraci, second.
Anybody have any discussion? Shannon, call the roll.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's it. That was it under the BZA. Under capital improvements, I'm going to give out the dates of the Capital Improvement Board meeting. They will start meeting on September 12th, and these meetings are all at 6:00. The next one will be September 14th, September 19th, and September 21st.
26th.
Oh, it's 26th.
We didn't check this.
Okay. September 26th. Excuse me. And I'll announce these at the council meeting, so in case anybody's interested in coming. But that's right now the schedule that we have for capital improvements. Finally, I just wanted to say that, you know, this summer's been a busy summer here in Twinsburg. I've had an opportunity to attend a lot of events that we've had, and just to name a few, the Twins Days, the night out with the Police and Fire Department, Rock the Park concerts, and the last one I attended was the Senior Picnic just last week. And all of those events were, they were great events. There was a great participation, a lot of turnout. They were all nice events, so I'm hoping that some of the residents had an opportunity to attend and join in on some of those as well. With that being said, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Stoffer.
Hi. The Architectural Review Board met on August 3rd. On there was Case 170883, and it was a three-season room at 10372 Fox Hollow Circle, and it was approved as noted. There were a couple of notes on it. The other was Case 170884, and that was 2065 Spring Ridge Drive, and it was a new home by Polte, and that was also approved. 10194, Case 1708085, it was in Corbett's Lane, another single-family home by Polte, was approved as noted. 170886, and this was at 2533 East Aurora Road, revising some signage for McDonald's, and all of those were approved as noted as well. There was another meeting on August 17th, and that had Case 170887, and that was the demolition, demolition of an industrial building. And that was approved, and the issue of certificate of appropriateness was also approved. That was at 8589 Darrell Road. Case 170777, and that was a, for signage for Campbell Roofing, that was approved as noted. Case 170888 was another sign on 9224 Darrell Road. That was for Al-Nola shoe repair. That was, that was approved, approved. Another sign, Case 170889, and that was signage for suburban physical therapy by S. Science. I believe, I apologize, but I don't have the minutes on this, and I have my notes on them, but that one was approved, I believe, as well. If not, I'll let you know at the next meeting. Case 170890, it was a single-family home, 10154 Corbett's Lane by Polte. That was approved. 1708091, 2091 Meadowwood Boulevard, home was approved as well. They're pretty much built out on Corbett's Lane, from what I understand, or from, I'm in Corbett's, the subdivision there. They have about four to five houses left, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Fury.
Thank you. On August 7th, the Planning Commission met. There was one item on the agenda, and it was a conditional use application for Rush Hour Grill to relocate to 10735 Ravenna Road. And the condition, the condition was that they wouldn't want to put a 300-square-foot porch patio on the back of the building. Planning Commission heard from several residents from both sides. In the end, they voted unanimously under the following conditions, that there would be no live events on the, on the patio, no TV, that they were allowed one speaker to be poured inward towards the building, and they needed to update a landscaping plan prior to construction. This would be on 86, 2017, but I think we're passing over that this evening, as some additional questions have arisen. The next Planning Commission meeting is on the, is on September 18th, on Monday evening. Tonight, the Finance Committee met. We did a review of our, a mid-year review of our finances. Our Finance Director, Karen House, put together a graph of 2013, 2017 on revenues for the first six months of each year. And the reason that's important is in 2013, we were still collecting 2.25 or 13% more income tax than we do today, since we voted to take that off. At that year, we did 18.3 million in income tax alone, and this year, after, after that weaned off and businesses started to pick up again with the cornerstone and other new businesses in the city, we're back up to almost $16 million for the first half of the year. So that's our total revenue, but income tax is the largest part of our revenue. At the same time, our expenditures are less today for the first six months of 2017 than they were in 2013. So the city council, the city and the administrations did a great job of reducing expenditures, and our revenues are, are rising. And as Mr. Scafidi mentioned, the capital improvement and the budget process are starting to go into effect right now for next year. The next Finance Committee meeting is going to be Thursday, September 14th, at 7:00. I get a note from the, our Community Hunger Center. They wanted us to get their July statistics that are courtesy of the Akron Canton Regional Food Bank. In July, the Community Hunger Center served 1,248 people, consisting of 329 seniors, 607 adults ages 19 to 59, and 312 children. So they're, they're doing a great job of helping people in need in Twinsburg, and would hope that you would consider, consider supporting them. They're at 9733 Ravenna Road, and their phone number is 330-963-Food. I also had an opportunity, as Mr. Scafidi said, to go to several events this summer. Relay for Life was the most recent one, where we, the city ran a dunking booth with Mr. Roden and Mayor Yates were on the, on the seat when I was there. And I want to thank the San Cesaria family and the Felder family. They've been involved with this Relay for Life for at least 10 years. The kids have been running it for the last two years, and all those kids are graduating from high school and will be off in college next year. But I'm sure that Rob Felder and Kim San Cesaria will still be heavily involved in keeping this going. Had an opportunity to go to the McCarrian Golf Outing, and it was extremely successful. Brian Donato does a fantastic job of organizing and getting prizes and getting people out there. Had an opportunity to go to the Police Night Out, where I saw the mayor get attacked by a dog for the second year in a row. Told him to get a bigger suit, and I let him bite me, but it just doesn't fit. Had an opportunity to go to Twins Days. Also, there's a Park and Rec meeting, it'll be later this week. Unfortunately, I'll be unable to attend. Mr. McPheron's going to handle it for me, and that's August 26th at 6:30. And one last thing, I wanted to make a motion to add to the bid list the careful removal of the old school. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Shannon?
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Roden.
Thank you. Mr. Fury just talked about the Finance Committee. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend, I was in traffic, so thank you for doing all that without me there. I apologize. The Environmental Commission will meet Thursday, September 14th at 7:00 in the Engineering Office, a little different than where we normally meet. And then the Twinsburg Environmental Commission and Tinkers Creek Watershed Partners are doing Cleanup Day and the Watershed Festival on October 7th. It's Saturday. The Cleanup Volunteers will meet at the Twinsburg Community Center at 9:00 a.m. and work till noon. At 9:00 a.m., there'll be coffee pastries will be provided, with bags, gloves, the map of where we're going to be going and cleaning. And then, following that, there'll be a cookout at 11:30 to noon. Food is sponsored by the Twinsburg Township. Then the Watershed Festival will immediately be held in the Public Works Department at 12:00 noon. There'll be a special environmental skit, tours of the wastewater treatment facility, hikes with the city naturalists, plants from Garden Club. There'll be prizes for children and adults, and free trees for the first 100 attendees. Refreshments, sandwiches, and beverage will be available during the Watershed Festival. If you are looking for more information, go to twinsburgrecreation.com, and you can register in advance. You can also call Daisy Walker. Do you want me to give your number out, Daisy? 216-224-8896, or you can reach her at 330-425-7161. That's actually the city's number, sorry. And then the Environmental, another thing to talk about is the Environmental Commission will be recognizing Twinsburg residents for making environmentally conscious choices, such as picking up trash on city streets, lawns, curbs, vacant lots, in a deliberate effort to recognize the residents for performing community service. The Roundfish will welcomes nominations, and you can, again, call Daisy or Chuck Benacci, who's our vice chair. But again, I think it'd be a great program on October 7th, kind of mixing together, which is great, get more involvement, and that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seth, did you say October 7th was the Cleanup Twinsburg Day?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make sure I'm not going.
Mr. Steele.
Golf Advisory Board met last week. The biggest thing to take away from that was that the golf course, at this moment, is down about 250 rounds from last year. Most of that is weather-related, depending on where in the year. July, we did a ton of business, a ton of rounds, but it's making up for where we were down in May when it was really, really wet. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. McPheron.
With the Fitness Committee, Maureen and I are going to work on getting something scheduled for that, as we haven't had a meeting yet. I hope everyone likes the new red fire hydrants, and that was a result of the last Safety Committee meeting, where fire and service worked together to come up with a color that would be more visible, and also work with the Service Department for easy application. The next safety meeting is going to be November 4th. The next Community Relations meeting is September 21st. I did attend the Golf Advisory Meeting last week, and then tonight's Finance Meeting. Let's see what else. I will be attending the Parks and Recs meeting this Thursday, and I was able to enjoy a lot of the summer activities, starting with McCarrian Outing, the concerts in the park, the National Night Out, Twins Day, and the Senior Picnic. And I'm looking forward to the Market in the Square on Saturday. That's all I have.
Thank you. A few things to mention, as, as Mr. Fury alluded to, we are, we will be passing over Resolution 86, 2017 this evening by request of the attorneys for both parties. And I wanted to make a motion to add an executive, executive committee meeting at the conclusion of, or the end of this meeting. Is there a second? We're going to be discussing personnel and contracts.
I'll second.
Mr. Roden, second. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Ms. McPheron?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Roden.
Thank you. Mr. Fury just talked about the Finance Committee. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend, I was in traffic, so thank you for doing all that without me there. I apologize. The Environmental Commission will meet Thursday, September 14th at 7:00 in the Engineering Office, a little different than where we normally meet. And then the Twinsburg Environmental Commission and Tinkers Creek Watershed Partners are doing Cleanup Day and the Watershed Festival on October 7th. It's Saturday. The Cleanup Volunteers will meet at the Twinsburg Community Center at 9:00 a.m. and work till noon. At 9:00 a.m., there'll be coffee pastries will be provided, with bags, gloves, the map of where we're going to be going and cleaning. And then, following that, there'll be a cookout at 11:30 to noon. Food is sponsored by the Twinsburg Township. Then the Watershed Festival will immediately be held in the Public Works Department at 12:00 noon. There'll be a special environmental skit, tours of the wastewater treatment facility, hikes with the city naturalists, plants from Garden Club. There'll be prizes for children and adults, and free trees for the first 100 attendees. Refreshments, sandwiches, and beverage will be available during the Watershed Festival. If you are looking for more information, go to twinsburgrecreation.com, and you can register in advance. You can also call Daisy Walker. Do you want me to give your number out, Daisy? 216-224-8896, or you can reach her at 330-425-7161. That's actually the city's number, sorry. And then the Environmental, another thing to talk about is the Environmental Commission will be recognizing Twinsburg residents for making environmentally conscious choices, such as picking up trash on city streets, lawns, curbs, vacant lots, in a deliberate effort to recognize the residents for performing community service. The Roundfish welcomes nominations, and you can, again, call Daisy or Chuck Benacci, who's our vice chair. But again, I think it'd be a great program on October 7th, kind of mixing together, which is great, get more involvement, and that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seth, did you say October 7th was the Cleanup Twinsburg Day?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make sure I'm not going.
Mr. Steele.
Golf Advisory Board met last week. The biggest thing to take away from that was that the golf course, at this moment, is down about 250 rounds from last year. Most of that is weather-related, depending on where in the year. July, we did a ton of business, a ton of rounds, but it's making up for where we were down in May when it was really, really wet. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. McPheron.
With the Fitness Committee, Maureen and I are going to work on getting something scheduled for that, as we haven't had a meeting yet. I hope everyone likes the new red fire hydrants, and that was a result of the last Safety Committee meeting, where fire and service worked together to come up with a color that would be more visible, and also work with the Service Department for easy application. The next safety meeting is going to be November 4th. The next Community Relations meeting is September 21st. I did attend the Golf Advisory Meeting last week, and then tonight's Finance Meeting. Let's see what else. I will be attending the Parks and Recs meeting this Thursday, and I was able to enjoy a lot of the summer activities, starting with McCarrian Outing, the concerts in the park, the National Night Out, Twins Day, and the Senior Picnic. And I'm looking forward to the Market in the Square on Saturday. That's all I have.
Thank you. A few things to mention, as, as Mr. Fury alluded to, we are, we will be passing over Resolution 86, 2017 this evening by request of the attorneys for both parties. And I wanted to make a motion to add an executive, executive committee meeting at the conclusion of, or the end of this meeting. Is there a second? We're going to be discussing personnel and contracts.
I'll second.
Mr. Roden, second. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ceraci?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
We had also Fill a Bag, Feed a Family, which is a huge undertaking, and just think, we had a ton of residents come out and really help in that. And Darko wasn't, you know, we were able to use their warehouse again. Just, you know, that provided, I believe, about 12,000 to 14,000 pounds of food to the Emergency Assistance Center. And just, I just want to thank everyone that helped put that together, because it is, you know, to hand out 10,000 bags and collect them all in a week period is a big undertaking. The Rotary River Run was a huge success. I believe they sold out the last two days, they did three days, and ended up just being a great event. I don't think anybody had any real expectations as to who would come out and who would participate, but it was a good fundraiser for the Rotary, and I think a lot of people just had a blast doing it. And a lot of people who hadn't really experienced Tinkers Creek and the beauty of Tinkers Creek really got to see, you know, what kind of a really natural asset we have back there. Senior Picnic, I did go to. It's always a fun event. I give Laura a lot of credit. The seniors love it, and just they hit a lot of sponsors that helped put that on, but another, we had another beautiful day, and thanks for the people that came out to help volunteer there. Rock the Park was, we had seven concerts this year, all successful. You know, the first three or so, we had, well, we deal with rain pretty much every show, but the rain really impacted the first few shows, but it was a great year. I think financially, we did really well with the concert series this year, so, you know, hopefully, we'll continue to build it. I know we always look in the future and ways to make that amphitheater a bigger and better place, because, you know, when I walk around, I go to almost all the concerts, and I talk to people, and they're coming, they're coming from all the surrounding communities, and they're like, we had no idea this was back here. I can't believe, you know, what a great venue you guys have for concerts, and we really do, and it's great that we get the support from our community, but it's starting to bleed out into other communities that really recognize what we have. Ms. McPherson mentioned Market on the Square. This is our third event. It'll be this weekend. It's gotten bigger, the first two, I expect it's going to get bigger this month, and then we've got one in September. So I encourage you to come out and visit the vendors, and it's just, it's just great seeing activity on our square in our downtown area, people walking around, you know, the vendors I talk to, I go to, and they just, they love, they love the atmosphere of the square, they love being visible, and so I encourage you to come out for that. We did our third quarter Town Hall meeting, so if you haven't come to this, we put this into place to be one every quarter, and so we'll have one more coming up. And it's just an opportunity for us to kind of share, I usually bring in a couple of department heads, council members usually show up, and it's just some open dialogue with residents, so we can share things that are going on in town, or if you've got questions. You know, a lot of times in the past, award meetings were kind of sporadic, and when we planned them, we brought in everybody and, you know, all the department heads, and we just dumped a bunch of information, it wasn't very interactive, so I tried to create these to make it more interactive with the residents. So the next one, it may have been planned for October, I might kick it till after the election, because we're probably going to have a couple of new council members, so it may be an opportunity for them to come in, or residents that maybe want to hear them and talk with them. So just listen for the date, we'll announce it soon. Lastly, just a couple of things. I had the opportunity to swear in a couple of new officers, Larnie Zellner and Alex Lovis. We'll probably do a formal, we've had probably three, four, or five new officers that we've sworn in over the last year, year and a half, that we haven't had a formal swearing-in, a ceremonial swearing-in in front of council, and I'd like to set that up, but we've got some great young guys really starting with the force, and it's really a challenge in today's world to get the right individuals that really want to commit themselves to this very difficult job. So we'll be advertising that, and we're going to try to get them here in the next couple of months. And then lastly, I've been working with department heads, I just want to thank all of them. You know, we are in some challenging times with our budget, we're working through some decreased revenue. While we did see an increase from 15 to 16, we took a couple of years, I think three years of decreases in our revenue, so we're, you know, unfortunately, expenses continue to go up, but we're really working hard to lean things up for our 18 budget, looking at operations capital as well as the operations in our enterprise funds. But I just want to thank them, because I know it's been, we've been working the last couple of weeks doing it, and hopefully, in the next, I guess, three to four weeks, we'll have probably a preliminary budget for council to look at. Other than that, that's all I have.
No department head reporting?
Are you reporting? Nope. Looks like you, Karen.
I'm going to take a really long time.
You can take a long time.
I'm just going to report the income, everyone did receive the July income tax report, correct? Okay, good. For August, we've collected so far for the month, $1,788,077 compared to last year. We collected $1,498,360. This reflects an increase at 19%, or $289,717 more over last year. Refunds and adjustments were $63,855. Total year-to-date receipts is $15,303,707 compared to last year's collections, $14,713,568. This also reflects an increase of 4% or $590,000 more over last year. The net change in distribution and individual net profit and withholding is $205,515. I'd also like to report that, as the mayor stated, the 2018 budget has been prepared and ready to go, pretty much so, for both operating and capital, and will be submitted to the council in capital on Friday, September 8th, in your Friday packages for your review. The first Capital Improvement Board meeting, as stated by Councilperson Scafidi, is Tuesday, September 12th, and the first Finance Committee meeting is for September 14th. Soon, I will be working, I can't even believe I'm dealing with this again, is the continuing disclosure statement. That is for our investment world to analyze, to see the stability of the city of Twinsburg. That is due September 30th. I work along with squires and patents on that documentation. And lastly, the 2016 financial audit has been completed and submitted to the State Auditor Dave Yost's office. We cannot release it publicly yet until we get the authorization from the Auditor of State's office, but I will tell you that there were one recommendation and one management statement, so overall, I'm very pleased with this audit that was completed. Further information will come when it is completed, and we will have a Finance Committee meeting to go over it, open to all the council, and of course, publicly, once it's released. So, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. That it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Legislation. Resolution 84, 2017.
A resolution acknowledging council's receipt and review of the monthly financial statements submitted by the Finance Department for April, May, and June 2017.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 84, 2017. Is there a second?
I'll second. Gil?
Mr. Scafidi, second. Discussion?
We do this every month.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Serisi?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
Ms. McPherson?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. And I have another motion, that the City Council does not oppose the new liquor permit for the Master Pizza of Twinsburg LLC located on Ravenna Road, and authorize the clerk to submit the form to the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Steele, second. Discussion?
Just beer and wine.
Oh, just beer and wine. Yeah.
Did anybody have that?
Yeah.
I don't think they had any.
I thought they did.
Shannon said they needed to put in another bathroom.
Last time, they couldn't get the permit they wanted, because there was only one bathroom in the location. They were adding the second bathroom, so that they could get the permit that they wanted.
Gotcha, okay. As I was like, I know they were selling, I just, okay. Gotcha.
Anything else? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Serisi?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Stoffer?
Yes.
Mr. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Emergency Clause passes 7-0. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Ordinance 85, 2017.
An ordinance amending the current year appropriations for the various special revenue accounts as established in Ordinance 108, 2016, the appropriation ordinance of the city of Twinsburg for the year 2017.
And that was the first reading on that ordinance. Resolution 88.
A resolution declaring the official intent and reasonable expectation of the city of Twinsburg on behalf of the state of Ohio to reimburse its sewer improvement general fund for the Darrell Road sanitary replacement with the proceeds of tax-exempt debt of the state of Ohio.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 88, 2017. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Roden, second. Discussion?
This is so that we get financing for a sewer project, or we're committing to the state that will pay them back.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Serisi?
Yes.
Mr. Roden?
Yes.
Mr. Fury?
Yes.
Mr. Scafidi?
Yes.
That motion also passes 7-0. Now, Mayor, your report.
All right, thank you. Welcome back, Council and residents. It's been a really busy summer. Things going on around town, of course, if you've driven down Glenwood, you've seen the golf course, Clubhouse Project, it's moving on schedule. We had a big meeting today. Hopefully, next year at this time, we'll be doing a big open house there. But they're just working through that. We're working through a lot of things behind the scenes, just, there's a lot of work that goes into getting a facility that size open and staffed properly, so we're trying to work through all that right now. Road projects going on, Ravenna Road, you've noticed it's been paved, so there's parts of that that are being completed, then there'll be additional sections that'll be worked on for next year. The Fitness Center, if you work out there, the locker rooms on the poolside are complete. Huge improvements to the, just really the organization, lockers, the way the showers are structured, everything, it's just a big improvement at that facility. Hopefully, we're looking at potentially 19 to do the other side, so it's, depending on budget, that's what we're working toward. For those that enjoy the hot tub, unfortunately, the hot tub has seen its last day. We had, I don't know how many hundreds of gallons of water that were filled in there, drained somewhere. We haven't quite figured out where it drained to. The way that was designed and the way the pipes are run, there's no real salvaging that. We recognize the fact that we'd like to have a hot tub there, and so if you see that one being demolished and filled in, we do have future plans of replacing it, we're just not sure how and with what. But unfortunately, we lost our hot tub after 19 years. Things going on around town, we've mentioned a few of them, but Founder's Day was a big success despite getting three inches of rain in two hours. We had a river running down Church Street, but once the skies cleared, we had a lot of residents come out, and it ended up being a really good event. You know, there was a team that worked on that for probably a year and a half, two-year period, with everything that went on behind the scenes, but it was a really good committee, and just a lot really went into that, so hopefully, the residents that came out really enjoyed that day. National Night Out was another big event. We had probably 600 people last year. I'm guessing we had 850 or so people this year. We usually count hot dogs. I think it was about, what, 800 hot dogs we got rid of? So hot dog, one hot dog equals one person in my mind. So anyway, we had a great turnout, it was another great night. The Safety Force Challenge was fun again. I did take a couple of bites from Yasso. We have a new bite suit that is much better, much better than last year's.